Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham. Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
Councilwoman Back.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you today just to say thank you. Thank you that you have so graciously afforded us the opportunity of life, health, and strength. We ask now for your wisdom and your knowledge as we do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We thank you for the prosperity and growth of our city. We thank you for the leadership of our mayor. We ask your continued blessings upon him. Bless our council, and bless those who work daily to make our city a better city. Bless those who live in our city. We thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and the things that you are going to do. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on April 8th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 4th through the 10th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 on our agenda is reserved for proclamations and commendations, and I believe we have some this morning. I will say hi to Ruth Moffett. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. So, we actually have two this morning. So, I'm going to ask the Northeast Alabama Association of Realtors. Yeah, come on up. And we'll read this one first. Good morning. All right. So, here is the proclamation. It says, "Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial discrimination and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familiar status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal housing funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas the City of Gaston is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas our society fabric, the economy, health, the environment, are strengthened in diverse inclusive communities. And whereas more than 50 years after the passing of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant, and a common sense of decency and fairness, now therefore Craig Ford, Mayor of City of Gaston, Alabama, hereby join with the Gaston City Council in proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. In the City of Gaston, as an inclusive community committed to fair housing, to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of the city. Presented on the 15th day of April 2025, Mayor Craig Ford, and attested by City Clerk Iva Nelson."
Hi. I'm Kelly McIntyre. I'm the Association Executive with Northeast Alabama Association of Realtors. And every April, Realtors commemorate the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968 and reflect on housing discrimination and segregation, past and present. As community leaders, real estate professionals have an opportunity to be a part of an equitable and inclusive change. Fair Housing Month signifies a recommitment to advancing equitable opportunities and expanding homeownership. Real estate professionals and consumers depend on strong fair housing laws and practices for our communities and economy to thrive. Discrimination distorts the housing market and closes the door on the American dream of homeownership for qualified buyers. Realtors build communities. Fair housing is our foundation because that's who we are. And thank you for the Fair Housing Proclamation from the City of Gaston."
All right. I have one more. Family Success Center and Autism Awareness Month. Have them come up. All right. I'm going to raise this a little bit so I can see. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a complex developmental condition affecting social interaction, communication, and behavior. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimates that approximately 1 in 36 children in the United States are diagnosed with ASD, with boys being four times more likely than girls to receive a diagnosis. Whereas in Alabama, the prevalence of ASD is estimated at 2.12% among adults, indicating a significant portion of our population is affected by this condition. And whereas early testing, diagnosis, and intervention are crucial to improving the outcomes and quality of life for individuals with ASD. And whereas the Family Success Center of Etowah County is dedicated to supporting individuals with ASD and their families through testing, resources, education, and advocacy. And whereas increased public awareness and understanding of autism can lead to a greater acceptance and support for individuals with ASD in our community. Now therefore Craig Ford, Mayor of City of Gaston, Alabama, hereby join with the Gaston City Council in proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Autism Awareness Month. In the City of Gaston, I encourage all citizens to learn more about autism and to support individuals with ASD and their families and in our community. Presented this 15th day of April 2025, Craig Ford, Mayor, and attested by City Clerk Iva Nelson.
Yay. Thank you.
She's...
You have three. One, two.
Thank you. You know I'm a little excited.
Hi. I'm Emma Clapp. I'm the Executive Director of the Family Success Center. I'd like to take a moment to introduce two staff members. All of you know Katie Bohannon. She's our Resource Development Director. This is Tracy Bailey. She is our clinic coordinator. So, without her, none of this would be possible. The Family Success Center, over a year ago, decided to partner with the Ark of Madison County to provide a service that was not currently being provided in Etowah County. So, we provide autism diagnostic testing for children ages of 2 to 5. And I think Tracy and I are the only ones in our office who are certified to do so, but we provide that testing, send that back to the pediatricians, who then turn around and provide a diagnosis as needed. We have over 40 programs in our office. This is our newest one, and probably the one that's the most needed at this time. We know it's Child Abuse Awareness Month and Fair Housing Month, but this is a new one for us. So, we're very happy to have you guys acknowledge this month and make this an important factor that people can learn about. It is a huge thing that's happening. It's happening a lot in Gaston. So, we just want to say thank you so much for partnering with us on this. And if you have any questions, feel free to let us know. Tracy, you want to say anything? Nope, she says no. Okay. Thank you. If you have any children who need to be tested, let us know. We'll be glad to help between the ages of 2 and 5. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruth. Very great. We appreciate these organizations. And Emma, you and your group continue to do great things. You know, the Family Success Center isn't just a name. It's literally success for our families in Gaston and Etowah County. So, thank you all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you for what you do. Appreciate you. All right. We'll move on in our agenda. Item number 8 is unfinished business. We don't have any today. Move to item 9. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 140 Ewing Avenue in District 3 from an R1 single-family residence district to an I1 light industrial district. The owner wants to place a commercial warehouse building on the property. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 10. Our next public hearing is a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. This is for Bama Quick Shop LLC, located at 1,000 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, has applied for an off-premises retail beer and table wine license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I should have said during discussion, the only reason why we're doing this at this point is because this is the new owner of the establishment. So, just kind of just give the heads up on that.
Thank you for that clarification. Item 11 is a resolution awarding bid number 3596 for Twin Bridges Golf Club Sand Bunker Renovations Project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Eagle Golf and Athletics Incorporated in the amount of $449,734. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, just to clarify, this includes a total of 17 bunkers on the golf course that'll be renovated, and that renovation will include pouring a concrete base with some complex fridge drain systems under there so that the sand won't erode away. Long story short, this is coming out of the budget for the golf course, and we're going to split this up between the fiscal year '25 budget and the fiscal year '26 budget. The project's going to take a good while. But the justification for all of this operationally is, without these improvements, that sand is very expensive, and as every time it rains, it washes that sand away, so you're constantly having to replenish it, and it's an ongoing operating expense for the golf course. This one-time capital outlay will help dramatically lower that annual operating expense. They won't have to buy as much sand to continuously refill the bunkers.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilman Wilson. Any other comments from the council? All right. If not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution designating voting delegates for Alabama League of Municipalities' Annual Business Meeting on May 15 in Huntsville. This names Council President Pro Tem Steve Smith as the official voting delegate, and Councilwoman Tanya Latham and Councilwoman Dixie Minatra as alternate voting delegates. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
I've got some major concerns. Just kidding.
Okay. Well, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution appointing member to Gaston Museum of Fine Arts Incorporated Board. This appoints Donna Russell to replace Mario Gallardo for a term expiring December 31, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
Is there... Was... And you guys may not know, but did Mario's term just expire?
I believe. I was told he might resign for a certain reason. I don't know. Maybe personal or something.
Okay. I hadn't heard, so I'm not sure.
Well, I just know he's a good resource for the arts in this community, and I know he had left another board recently, too. I was just didn't know if there was... Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing legal engagement with Han Erendall Harrison Sale. This is for representation of the city concerning general business licensing matters. There is a retainer fee, and services will be provided on an as-needed basis at $245 per hour for partners and $110 for paralegals. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Mr. President, just to clarify, this isn't necessarily a specific amount, but it is a retainer. I think they're budgeting for around $20,000. But the purpose for this is, when we have an audit request or a dispute that has to do with business licensing and how those fees are calculated, these individuals specialize in that. So, they would represent the city in the event that we do have an issue.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Tillman Consulting LLC. This is for right-of-way acquisition services for the South 11th Street Partial Realignment and Resurfacing Project from the Bridge over Black Creek to Randall Street. The amount is $51,750. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm sorry that this is three in a row that I'm going to make a comment about, but this one's in my district, and this has been a project that has been in the planning stages for probably almost eight years now. For those of you who know, we obviously just did a major roadway project, an improvement project, on South 11th Street, all the way up to the bridge. If you're coming from the high school going towards downtown, right before you get to the wildlife recreation area there is where we've stopped. Well, the plan is to acquire some land in that little S curve as you come up the hill there towards downtown so that we can kind of straighten the road out a little bit to make it less of a blind curve. It'll also allow us to complete our sidewalk project. So, that sidewalk will now come from the bridge all the way up into downtown to Randall Street. So, the goal from day one was to give a safe pedestrian walkway for our students to be able to walk or potentially ride their bicycles from Gaston City High School all the way to downtown and back. So, now this will complete that mission so that they'll have unimpeded sidewalk access all the way throughout downtown. Theoretically, you'll be able to walk on a sidewalk all the way from Broad Street to Gaston City High School without ever having to get in the road or not walk through or not use a defined pedestrian walkway. So, this is exciting. And this will just be the funds that we use to help acquire all of that right-of-way land that we need to do the redesign of the road.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Anyone else? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 16 comes under first readings. This is an ordinance amending City Code Section 110-133 regarding permit fees for work done which could affect public rights of way maintained by the city. The fee is $25 for residential applicants and $150 for up to 1 acre disturbed, plus an additional $100 per acre thereafter. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 17 is also comes under first readings. This is an ordinance amending City Code Section 6-8L to allow package stores to sell alcohol between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. on Sundays. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 18 is new business. I believe we have one item this morning?
Yes, Mr. President. I have... This is a resolution from the Engineering Department authorizing the submission of the non-residential Phase 1 permit application required for the Couso Harbor development. Essentially, the deal that was announced a few months ago with Patrick Lawler from the same individual who built the Gunnersville City Harbor project, to build the Couso Harbor Project here, just off of 411 in downtown here. Most of y'all would know where the old theater, movie theater was, back there, that big vacant area. And it's a super exciting project. I think the budget estimate for Mr. Lawler right now is somewhere around 20, 25 million. And so, part of that process is, he has to get permits from Alabama Power to build all of the boat slips and the design work for all of that along the some 600 feet of waterfrontage where this development's going to take up. So, in order to get that project started, you first have to have approval of Alabama Power to install those boat slips and boat docks and the floating decks and all of that. So, this will formally submit that application from the city to Alabama Power to get that process started. Mr. Lawler's ready to go. This process could take somewhere between 8 to 10 months, but we're going to try to do everything we can to put some external pressure on Alabama Power to hopefully expedite that process so that Mr. Lawler can get started with this project. So, time is of the essence, and with that in mind, I would ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. We move to item 19. Department reports, committees, and boards. I see Janet Terrence is with us this morning. Always like to see you come and speak to us. That means something exciting is happening, Janet.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you for letting me come. So sorry about that.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for letting me come and give some reports. I want to give an exciting report on our Smoke on the Falls that we had this past weekend up in Nakalula, the new campgrounds. First of all, we had 70 participants, backyard and professional cookers, as well as 15 of the kids queue, which was really cute. And a lot of our cookers this year, or several, offered samples to the public, and that went over great. So, real excited that they're back on track doing that. We'd kind of stopped with COVID, but now they're kind of back, and excited to do that again. On the attendance on Saturday, we had around 3,000-plus just coming and walking around and checking out the campgrounds, checking out the participants. They enjoyed the music. They were very excited about the campgrounds, of course. Our food trucks stayed busy, and they loved the live music. We had two great performers there. As far as the cooks and the teams, and as far as the renovations went, I mean, these people, they said it was the best campground they'd ever seen. They were super excited about it. Some of our teams that had been in the past could not believe the transformation, and they were just like, they couldn't believe it was the same place. So, it was really exciting to hear all of the good feedback and everything, and even one of our first-place winners, we'd ask him, you know, what his favorite thing was about the weekend as he was coming up to get his cash. He had never been there before, and he said his favorite thing was coming to this campground. He said because he would be back. And he just, he fell in love with it, of course. We had several of our sponsors there, and they were very satisfied with the way everything turned out. And we've got teams that are already looking forward to signing up for 2026. And we are already talking and brainstorming, coming up with ways that we can make it bigger and better, of course. So, it was a very, very, very positive weekend, and thank you guys for letting us do that. We had a lot of sponsors. A lot of you guys came out and enjoyed the day, and visitors, and we thank everyone who participated and had a little hand in that. And I know Chris and Ms. Minatra, they were there and got to eat a lot of stuff, and we actually had some locals that won. All of you probably know Jarvis Rawls. He won Best Pizza. And then our very own Brent Pollard, who works for Public Works, he won second place in Desserts. And Shannon Graham, he took home several awards. He's from the Glencoe area. So, we had some locals that placed in it, too. So, very excited about that. And then, we are going to go right from barbecue into strawberries and talk about our Strawberry Festival that we have coming up. Very, very excited. As you know, farmers, they have a hard time with the weather. You never know what's going to happen, and so we were getting a little bit concerned. We've had a lot of rain. We got wind that there's some seeds from Canadian that a lot of people used to grow their strawberries with, and those seeds were contaminated, so it has killed a lot of the strawberry crops. But, good news is, we still have two strawberry vendors coming. Ant Freezer's coming, and we landed the biggest strawberry grower in the state of Alabama, C&amp;J's Strawberry Farms. They pick over 1,000 gallons of strawberries a day. And in my moment of panic, when I thought we wasn't going to have any strawberries, I come across him on Facebook. So, I called him up and asked him, you know, if he would come to Gaston if he had the date available. And luckily, he said yes. And then, the second thing is, do you have the date available? And he said that he had been praying that he would find a date available. It's the only one he didn't have, and, you know, the strawberries were going to go to waste if he didn't find somewhere. So, very excited. He is excited about this weekend. He's got pink and green baskets for Easter. So, if you guys want some good strawberries, you need to come to the Strawberry Festival this Saturday. It's going to be located where the ice skating rink was, 9:00 to 1:00. Bring your blankets and enjoy brunch because we also include our Blue Jean brunch there. We'll have seven food trucks. We have 32 specialty vendors, which may be crafts, jams and jellies, baked goods, all of that great stuff. We'll have a mimosa bar, making strawberry mimosas. We have live music, starting at 9:00 with John Player, and 11:00 a.m. with Courtney Daly and the Daly Grind. They do funk, soul, Motown, and R&B. We've got activities that the kids will enjoy. We've got pony rides, and we've got our Nakalula Scales and Tales Roadshow. So, they're going to bring from Nakalula a bunch of the animals and set up a little petting zoo. The weather is going to be absolutely wonderful. Low is going to be 60, high 85. So, bring your lawn chairs, your blankets, and come enjoy a great day with us at the Strawberry Festival and Blue Jean brunch.
Thank you so much. What a great report. And I think I saw where this was your 16th year with the barbecue.
Yes. Yes. I've been, well, in about a week and a half, I'll have been with the city 17 years, and the Smoke on the Falls was our 16th year. So...
That has... The growth of that has been amazing, so thank you for all your work and for all the help that you give with that.
It has been very exciting. Yes. Thank you so much.
Would you say, how many? 70 vendors and over 3,000 people?
Yes, sir. 70 cook teams and over 3,000 people came out to enjoy the day.
Well, that's a big deal. Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else have any comments? All right. Thanks, Janet.
Thank you.
Any other reports from committees or boards? Anybody with Mayor's Office or Administration? All right. Well, then, we'll move to item 20 on our agenda. This is the citizen request to speak. We have three today. The first is Nina Buchanan about a men's health fair. Is Ms. Buchanan here? All right. I don't see Ms. Buchanan, I guess. So, we'll move to the second speaker requested to speak is Isha Bothwell. Did I say that right? And here to talk about Wildcats Academy. I believe that's tied in with the old school. And I'm a... I know you don't believe it, but I'm old school, so it's...
Well, good morning. My name is Aisha Bothwell.
Aisha. I'm sorry I mispronounced that.
No problem. I am here to speak on behalf of the Wildcats Academy as well as... as well as our president, Mr. Tredwell. He was not able to come today. Wanted to just bring your attention to the fact that this is our 18th year of participation. We want to thank you because of your financial support, we were able to participate, have a weekend starting actually Thursday. And what will happen is, the festivities will start. Some of you guys are... Some of you guys are kind of looking at me strange, so I'm going to go back up just a little bit. Wildcats Academy is for our children, at youth risk, children that are having issues at home. So, we come every year, have activities so that we can raise money, and because you all supported us this year, we were able to start our activities starting on this Thursday. Thursday, we'll start at the American Legion, and what we will have there is pep rally time. At this pep rally time, we're just going to be giving out actually gifts if you want to come and try for a prize and/or things that people have actually purchased already. On our Friday, that's game night. And do you guys play basketball? No? You're welcome to. Come on out.
Long, long time ago, there was a peach basket when I played.
Well, we're going to have three games. We usually have games on that Friday night as well as Saturday, but we stop because everybody loves the tailgate. Everybody comes home, and guess what? This is Easter weekend. So, it's a very big weekend for us, and we want to thank you. That's why I'm standing here to say thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to have three games. Guess what? Atala is joining us this year. So, we have two games that will be just the teams meeting up. I think it's going to be Gaston High, Litchfield. Then it's going to be Emma Sansom and Atala. Whoever wins, they're going to pay, play that last game, which is the third game. And on Saturday, tailgate. Everybody's coming out to cook. We're going to do an extension of the Smoke on the Falls. That's what we'll be doing that day. Come, bring everything with you. Everybody's going to be eating, enjoying each other, having a good time. It's going to start at 6:00 a.m. I've heard some people usually come out at 12:00 a.m. because they're so excited, but yes, but trust me, you're going to be able to taste everybody's food, enjoy everything. They're going to end that night. Anybody know Life Jennings? Have you ever heard of Life Jennings? Yeah, he's an R&B singer, and he's going to come out actually to entertain us at 2:10 at the track. The official headquarters for Enjoying Yourselves will be at the American Legion, which is on 8th Street. And then, we're going to ask if your attorney, Mr. Lee Roberts, if he'll come out and lead us in a song.
You know, he's a big Beyonce fan.
Hey. They're, they're going to line dance, so if he know how to line dance, he's welcome to do that as well. But actually, what's going to happen is on Sunday, we're going to have Gospel at the Park. But before Gospel at the Park, we are going to have an Easter egg hunt for our children at 3:00 p.m., so please come out for that as well. But we have a male's course this year, and I just thought Mr. Lee Roberts could help us in that area, maybe, perhaps. Yeah, you don't think so? However, these are all the activities that we're adding this year because of your financial assistance with us. So, we want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you for my time this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Bothwell. This is exciting. What a great event y'all have created.
It is. It's going to be, yes, sir.
Lot of activity, bringing in a lot of people from out of town, too.
Exactly. A lot of people home that have not been here for years or maybe came last year, but this will be our 18th year, and we plan to continue this, to go on and on and on as many years as possible, because we have a lot of children that need help. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. That's exciting, especially the children's part. It's exciting to hear. Okay, our third speaker today is Mr. Joseph Cole. Mr. Cole here this morning? All right, I don't see Mr. Cole. All right, well, we will move on to item 21, Remarks by the Mayor and Council. I guess we can start in District 1. The mayor is out of town today, headed to Montgomery, and so, we'll start with Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck. Congratulations to those organizations who were recognized today. Looking forward to Old School Weekend. Hopefully, we'll get to participate, and thank you for what you're doing with the young people in our community. I do want to offer condolences and prayers to the Kimball family. Reverend Harold Kimball passed away on yesterday morning, and those who know him know he was pastor in here in the city for a number of years, and also the founder and organizer of Quest for Excellence, which was a good program for young people, education, helping enrich, enrichment, and mentorship, a number of things. So, our thoughts and prayers are with the Kimball family, and I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, want to offer condolences to the family of Pastor Harold Kimball, who has just been a great icon in our city for many years, and most people my age remember Quest and all the great work that he did there, so we would keep the family lifted up in prayer. Also, Ms. Katie Bohannon and the group that was here with Autism Foundation, thank you for all that you do. Autism is really heavy on my heart. My wife was a teacher that even start for a few years with autism kids, and that takes a special call, and those children have to pair with you, and once they do, you know, you kind of have them drawn to you for life. So, we appreciate them coming today and receiving that award. Also, those with the Fair Housing Act representatives who came today. We all know that's a big need in our city, so we want to also thank God and recognize them as well for just keeping the playing field level in our city. It's Holy Week, and just want to remind everybody that this is Holy Week or what's called Passion Week, the culmination of Lent season, 40 days leading up to Resurrection Sunday, so we encourage everybody to get out, go to church somewhere. Also, Old School. We always excited about Old School Weekend. I'm glad it's happening on this weekend, just a great weekend to have it, great opportunity for a lot of friends and family to reconnect. Wanted to thank Ms. Tina King and our Police Chief, Chief Jaggers, as well as Mayor Ford. We've been doing gas giveaway for minus COVID a decade now, and we always try to schedule it and strategize it. We're near a major highway, but we wanted to try to do something in our district this year, so I want to thank those three for helping me to organize it and set it up where we can do it, right there on the border of District 1 and 2 on East Braw. So, we do know and we are aware that it's going to be some congestion, but we're giving away something free, trying to uplift the community, which is one of our bedrock principles, to make sure we're always giving back to the community, such as last night, free grief courses that we offering Wednesdays, every Wednesday for 15 years, Celebrate Recovery, and us trying to give something back to the community. Sometimes it may come with some, some good problems. So, those of you that may be in convenience, just give us a free pass for one day. And again, thank y'all for all of that you do here at City Home. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll piggyback on the condolences as it relates to Mr. Kimball and all of his great advocacy work that he have done in the city that reached not only here, but all the way up to even Washington, D.C., as you know his background and history. Also, on that part, many of us that follow sports, especially the Average Joe, I guess, what are they, I'll just say Average Joe Group or Organization that highlights a lot of our high school and in the city and the county. Reggie Davis was a gentleman that was on that, a part of that group that passed, I think maybe a couple of years now, and so, want to give condolences to his family. His mother passed, and so, just on that note, just keeping that family uplifted as they continue to go through situations as it relates to death. Flashback Weekend, thanks for the group for putting, you know, heads in beds, shopping local, restaurants will be packed downtown Tuscaloosa Avenue area, just, just giving the opportunity to give into a youth. We're doing some things on Tuscaloosa Avenue as it highlights to head start, and so, and then bringing entertainment to the city. Life Jennings is not just someone, you know, unknown, but he's an American artist, writer, and so, therefore, we appreciate the holistic approach that you guys are doing and continue to do. So, good to have Ed Wall back into the mix, and so, we'll say Go Rebels, and hopefully we'll bring that trophy back over to that side of town. All right. I wanted to highlight two, two things here. The Greater Gas and Housing Authority has a tremendous team. They do a lot of events and have a lot of programs as it relates to housing, our housing community, and under the leadership of Greg Price. So, this summer, I want to just mention just this one program real quick, and it's a STEM program, under the Esteem Honor Program. It says Stravaganza, STEM Stravaganza 2025, April to 26th, 2025, grades K through 12, 10:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And so, it is a nine-week event, so to you parents that are looking for something your children can get involved in, and this is a great program. This is not, if I'm not mistaken, just for housing, youth and teens only, but for anyone that's interested. But however, we're, we're targeting particularly those kids that are in housing just to, again, give you, them something extra to do for the summer. Positive program, educational and enrichment. Just the reason why I mentioned it from District 3, out of seven housing communities, District 3 has three, meaning that we have the most out of, out of any, any of the districts here in the city. And so, also, when you look at the layout of District 3 and those three communities, there are very little things that they can do as it relates to park, as it relates to community activities, things of that nature. So, when we have events like this and programs that offer Esteem and Honor programs, I want to highlight this for our parents so that our kids can stay active and not in just fun and outdoor activities, but also educational activities over the summer. On my final note, I would like to do something and say something as it relates to empty and dialectic buildings that's in detrimental attention in our community. We have owners that either live in the county area, out of the state, that own buildings and residential housing in our community that have been empty for quite some time. This is not an, an, and fun conversation having with the community because we're talking about people's property value. We're talking about activity in our community that continues to bait, drug activity, break-ins, just all type of things, even as it relates to rodents and other unwanted habitats that continue to increase as those buildings remain vacant. I'm just encouraging you to, you know, check your, your files and see if it's of interest of selling. If not, you can also get in touch with the clerk office and say, hey, I don't want it. Will the city take over? Can the city have it? And so that we can make sure that we can maybe possibly get these, get these buildings and properties into someone's hand that will take care of it. I mentioned that, and I'll mention this young lady that is sitting in the audience, and her name is Ms. Sarah Spears, who is the president of the Fourth Street Community Organization there. These are a passionate group of individuals who've worked very hard over their lifetime. Homeowners have a very nice neighborhood, and, and those are some of the topics of our conversations there when it comes to commercial property and residential property that are being unmaintained and kept. And so, I ask that out of the respect of those that have worked very hard, that have done all they can do to purchase their homes and to keep their homes in nice standing, is, is one thing to qualify your home or get your home appraised for $280,000, but can only sell it for 60 because of your surroundings, the area in which it in, because it is outnumbered with housings and commercial buildings that has not been done, anything been done to for several years. No, no, no plan, no results, no addressing the community and people about it. And so, what we're going, we're getting, we're strategizing, and our next strategy is going to kind of, I mean, we're trying to politely expose and ask of those to give us some ideas of what they're going to do, and then next, we'll take the next step in getting these, you know, our strategy out there on, you know, making some action happen with these buildings in our community. It's been far too long, and so, therefore, we need some positive addressing of housing. Need businesses to come back in our, our community so that our community could also be as vibrant as others as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson.
Yes, sir. I don't have much, just again, as my colleagues have already said, well, I'm a little confused. You call it flashback weekend, you call it old school weekend, so I'm not sure. Are those two different events, or y'all just?
It's the same.
Is this generational divide here in terminology? Okay, okay. That's what I thought. Well, regardless, what an incredible event that has grown and grown, and the one thing I'll say that hasn't been said yet is, of course, it puts, as we say in the economic development world, beds and heads, as Councilman Avery said, and, and in the restaurant world, we say butts and seats. You know, that's, that's a great economic impact for this community, but the one thing that I don't think people realize is the longer-term indirect economic impact to this, which is these are bringing people back to our community who are entrepreneurs, who are investors, who are looking to buy old rundown commercial and residential properties and fix them up, you know? And that's the real impact to me that is intangible. You can't put your hands on it, but you know it's happening, and it's happening all over our community. So, the, the value of this, you know, this event is really hard to put a number on, but I'm glad that we've been able to support it, and of course, as Mr. Roberts knows, this is a great way for us to market and promote our city, which is an allowable activity. So, congratulations to you guys on a, on an incredible effort over the last, I'm sorry, what'd you say, 18 years? It's 18?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, well, congratulations. I think anything we could do to expand on this and try to make it a week-long homecoming event for, for all former residents of Gaston. I mean, I would love to see how far this thing could grow and how big it could get, and I think it's a tremendous idea, and I appreciate you guys putting in all the effort to do it. That's all, Mr. President.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra.
Just a reminder that we're doing walking tours in the Tourism Group, and it is downtown this Saturday, 10:00. And am I right, Mr. Rogers? You will be the lead on that tour. The meeting will be at the Downtown Civic Center at 10:00, and it will be a one-hour walking tour of downtown. So, it was the, all of the Saturdays in April, and it is part of all of Alabama and walking tours for the month of April. So, if you have any questions, you can contact the Tourism Group, and their number is 549-0351. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I call it old school weekend, so I'm in that age group. It's just old, the old school comes back. Flashback's all right, but I'm going with old school. Okay, question about that. You said it's at the American Legion there on, on the 8th Street, correct? Is that right? Is, is that where the tailgate is also, all day long?
Tailgate is on the Gaston City High School.
And is that where the basketball games are?
Exactly.
Okay. And who has the trophy right now? Litchfield, Gaston High, or?
I think Gaston High.
Gaston High has it?
Gaston High got it.
Well, I'm going to say Go Tigers. Let's keep that right there with Gaston High.
Right. Where it needs to be.
That's where it needs to be, right there with Gaston.
Maybe at the statue.
Anyway, congratulations on that. It's going to be a good weekend. It's going to be a great weather weekend. And Janet's already left, but I want to congratulate Janet Terrence and her staff, the Nakalula Falls Park staff, the campground staff. I mean, they had to kind of reinvent that Smoke on the Falls for a new location, and it ran like a well-oiled machine. Me and Councilwoman Minatra was up there. We had some good barbecue and some snacks and listened to some music and walked around, but there were a lot of people walking through there, and everybody was enjoying themselves. It was perfect weather. I mean, there were cars parked as, as far as the church is, two roads over, walking over, and I think the city of Gaston had some, had some golf carts, cart people over, so that was nice of that. So, it really, really, really well-worn, really well-oiled, ran the machine, I would say. So, congratulations to them on that. That's all. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, wanted to start off with congratulating the Gaston City High School Scholars Bowl Team. They are once again, that means they've repeated, the state champions. I've read, I can't remember the exact scores, but it was, it wasn't even close. Every time- Every time they had a, a, a contest, they, they literally just, uh, hi- very much outscored the, the opponent, so great work to them. We're going to, I've reached out to the school. They're going to come and be honored and recognized here at council meeting, uh, so look forward to having them. Also want to, uh, join in with condolences to the Reverend Harold Kimball family. Uh, I met Reverend Kimball, gosh, I guess it's been twenty-five years ago, uh, when he started Quest for Excellence and, uh, he invited me to be part of the mentor program. So I did that for nine years at Striplin Elementary and that enabled me to get to know him and meet with him and he was helping me in that process and I saw his heart. Uh, he had a great heart for children. Of course, he had a great heart for the Lord first, but had a great heart for children and was just an icon in our community. He will be missed, so prayers with his family. I've, uh, this is the third time and the last time because the concert is this Thursday night, uh, but Damon Johnson is going to be at the Pittman Theater. This is a fundraiser for Downtown Gaston Incorporated. A lot of the things you see that DGI does downtown, this helps to, to fund that. Uh, the tickets are still available for the balcony, they're thirty-five dollars. You can get those at Downtown Gaston Inc. He's going to be joined by John Player and Gene Pleasure. John Player is a familiar name in Gaston, an outstanding musician, so it's going to be a great night. There's, there's room still left, uh, to get a chance to, uh, enjoy some, uh, great acoustic music, so I want to encourage everybody to, to please come out and support Downtown Gaston. And then last but not least, due to the Good Friday Holiday, Thursday's Garbage Route will be collected on Wednesday and Friday's route will be collected on Thursday. And I join with my fellow council members in encouraging everyone to attend the church of your choice this weekend. This is a holy week, it's just a great time to reflect and to be grateful for all that the Lord has done for us. So we're grateful for what he's done for our city and for this council and for this mayor and administration.